For February 26, 2024, I'm calling the meeting to order. And consistent with my policy of training a strong bench of future conservative leaders, I'm turning the nuts and bolts over tonight to guest chairman Nick Fiani.
Thank you. At this time, we have our moment of prayer. Commissioner Sample, please read us some prayer.
Yes, thank you. Let us pray. Dear God, thank you on behalf of all who have gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life, our families, and for our freedom we enjoy in our great country. Thank you for your guidance tonight. May you grant us the wisdom to govern despite the conflicts and issues of our times. Give us a sense of the true needs of the people. I pray the agenda set before us tonight that our decisions will please you and benefit those who live and work in our community. It is in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Sample. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Helsner.
President.
Commissioner Domas.
Here.
Commissioner Sample.
Here.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Here.
Commissioner Drake.
Here.
Commissioner Deaton.
Here.
Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Fiani.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a forum presence.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
So moved. Support Deaton.
Moved by Commissioner Domas, seconded by Commissioner Deaton. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The agenda is approved. At this time, we have employee recognition. I'll recognize Commissioner Deaton to take this opportunity to recognize Angelia.
Thank you, sir. You should. So I have the honor to present Angelia Pavlicek with employee recognition for this quarter. And what was unique about this one is that she was nominated by one of her fellow colleagues. That's pretty darn cool. So I'll read the citation here. So the background information. Employed Livingston County EMS for four years, starting as a full-time paramedic. Only one and a half years into her employment, she took on the role as a field training officer. Angelia's winning nomination, the winning nomination was submitted by one of her coworkers. Angelia is a highly skilled and experienced paramedic and educator. She is also a compassionate and dedicated member of the department. Recently, Angelia organized a successful virtual food drive that will provide much-needed assistance to local families in need. Angelia's efforts as a paramedic and educator have made a significant impact on our community. Her hard work and dedication don't go unnoticed. Her thoughtfulness with the food drive will help many families this coming holiday season. Angelia's leadership set her apart as she is a true role model for us all. She is a shining example of the difference one person can make in the lives of others. We are grateful for her contributions to our community and look forward to her doing more of great things. And this is from the Employee Recognition Committee, which review all these. This is as a paramedic, Angelia has demonstrated impeccable and made an incredible impact in the lives of others every day. But then she went beyond that to organize a food drive to further help the community families in need. Lastly, Angelia takes this compassion, thoughtfulness, and dedication for serving others and passes it on as an educator. The committee felt that just by being the person she was, Angelia fully embraced the love and service of the community. Without her knowing it, became a role model to those that she taught. And even to those who just witnessed her in her regular everyday setting. So at this time, if Ms. Pavlicek had come forward and get her award, then what we'll do is we'll go up on the stage here of the dais and get a picture, eh?
Good thing I'm short, you guys. Right behind me.
Alright.
I was gonna say. There we go.
On the count of three. Three, two, go.
One more applause.
Finish it off.
Congratulations.
The next item on this evening's agenda is correspondence. We do not have any correspondence this evening. Now we are to the call of the public. The call of the public is open. If you wish to speak, please fill out a card and present it to our deputy clerk. You'll be required to give your name and municipality, and you'll have three minutes to address the board. Do we have any cards this evening?
Mr. Chair, I have no cards.
Okay. Does anybody wish to speak and address the board? Appears not. Do we have anyone on Zoom who wishes to participate in the call of the public?
I do not see any, Commissioner.
Thank you. The call of the public is closed at this time. Is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes dated January 29, 2024? Closed session minutes dated January 29, 2024? And meeting minutes dated February 12, 2024?
So moved Gross.
Support Deaton.
Moved by Commissioner Gross, seconded by Commissioner Deaton. And any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? They're approved, eight to zero. We do not have any tabled items from the previous meeting. Next on the agenda is reports. We have a report, I believe, from Mr. Tom Hardy regarding FEMA. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. My name is Tom Hardy. I'm with FEMA's Intergovernmental Affairs. And I have with me the division supervisor for the county, DJ Think. Basically, Intergovernmental Affairs is a liaison to you and the townships in the county. Information on the FEMA programs and also a conduit for you to provide information back into FEMA if you have questions and comments or concerns and problems. Today, I was in three of the townships, and I'll be visiting each one of them. Next week, there will be a disaster recovery center that will be opening in Fowlerville. And that'll be there for approximately a week. This program that we have now is for individual assistance. And that means survivors who've had damage to their homes or they couldn't get to work because their business was closed or a tree fell on their driveway and they couldn't get out. And there've been a number of those. I understand there were a lot of trees down. This disaster was declared the beginning of last week, and they have about 60 days. They have 60 days to register. They can register online. They can register by calling FEMA's 1-800 number. In fact, that number is 1-800-321-3362. Or they can go in person to the recovery center, which is in Ingham County right now, but next week it will be here in Livingston County. There's a sequence of delivery that individuals sort of go through in order to get support from FEMA. And it starts off with their homeowner's insurance. If they have homeowner's insurance, they need to tell FEMA that, or if they don't, they have to say that and find out what their deductible is. FEMA will not pay for something that the insurance company has already paid for. They can get funding for their repairs on their homes. If they needed rental, it's been six months since the disaster actually happened. So if they needed some rental funds, then they can apply for those as well. And then there are other needs assistance, which might be if somebody was injured and things like that. So I'll be sending through the manager, Mr. Bird, information, which he may have already been passing out to you. But I urge him to give it to each of you so you can get it into your jurisdictions. You have any questions at this point?
Commissioner Helsner.
Mr. Chair. Where is the center going to be actually located in Fowlerville?
It's going to be in the firehouse in Fowlerville.
Okay, on the west side.
Yeah, I don't have that information directly because it hasn't actually happened yet. And until they know it will work, they don't really put out that information. DJ is more, that's more his side of the house.
Okay.
But I don't know if he has the location, the address, but it is the firehouse.
Okay, yeah. Okay, and you say a week?
Yes, it'll be there approximately a week.
Okay, and what are the hours?
So if I can, sir, we don't publicize the hours or the location until we've done the setup in a location.
Okay.
And the reason for that, well, there's numerous reasons, but mostly from the time that we do the lease with the location that we're going to be up until we actually get all of our ducks in a row, you know, make sure the internet's working, the security guard shows up. If something changes and we have to potentially shift locations or shift those dates and hours. So what'll happen is, once we have those things done, our external affairs team will publicize that. That information comes to folks like myself and Tom. We get about an hour, sometimes more, lead time before it goes to local media to distribute it to you folks.
There'll be a press release on that as soon as they know for sure exactly what day it will open. And I'll provide that again to Mr. Bird and then to all of you.
Okay, thank you.
Director Kramati, did you have?
If it's okay for clarification on the location, I can let you know that if you would prefer that I stand on that, stand down on that, now I will.
I think that the location that we've been scouting is fairly well-known. It's just that until it's finalized and we know it's functional with our teams in it, that's the only reason we don't make it publicly available.
Thank you. Sure, okay.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
How long does a citizen have to file a claim?
60 days from the day of the disaster declaration.
And when, so when will that expire?
Aprils.
April 8th.
8th.
And if they can't make it, you know, directly to the Fowlerville Firehouse, you left that 800 number, is that a?
Yeah, the 1-800 number that I gave you, yes. 1-800-321-3362. And they can go on online also.
There's an online?
It's FEMA dot.
Disaster.gov should get you that, as well as there's a FEMA app that allows for registration. There are also, and part of my role, just to clarify for all you folks, is that while Tom does the the interactions with the government officials, I work with the local and county EMS. If you guys are familiar with Lieutenant Wolf from Michigan State Police, I'm basically his federal counterpart here. So I supervise all the operational field elements. So one of the other things that we have is our disaster survivor assistance teams. These are the folks that go door-to-door in impacted areas, knocking, handing out flyers. They touch base with community businesses, churches, and other places that can help distribute those messages. So if you've got folks that can't register online, that can't for some reason call that number or make it to a center, we have folks that can go to them. And if you have pockets of communities that you feel that have been impacted that could benefit from that, my ask would be that you'd work with the county EMS. They can pass that information to us.
The main reason that we have folks that can support individuals who can't get to centers or can't call someone is elderly and they're just confused. They don't know exactly what to do. It's been so long. If you let the emergency manager know, can let us know. And we can get some support for that. Sometimes they have a person go to their home to help register them.
Any additional questions?
Think.
Want to clarify, this is about the storm that happened last summer, last spring?
August, yes, middle of August.
So it's just been declared emergency, a federal emergency, so they have 60 days now to claim.
Yeah, the president signed the declaration on the 8th of this month, so it's 60 days from that point.
Okay, very good.
Thank you for joining us this evening, for providing all this information. We look forward to working with you further.
If you, if you need to talk to me separately, if there was damage in your district and you want to sit down and go over that, I certainly would do that. If you can go through, again, your emergency manager, and we can take care of that.
That's outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have the resolutions for consideration. Is there a motion to approve resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the EMS operating fund to the EMS capital replacement fund?
So moved Deaton.
So I have a motion from Commissioner Deaton and support from Commissioner Helsner. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Resolution is approved. Is there a motion to approve resolution authorizing the purchase of capital asset management and work order software?
So moved Deaton.
Moved by Commissioner Deaton, supported by Commissioner Domas. I know this was extensively discussed in committee. Is there any additional discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Roll call vote. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, roll call vote. We'll do a roll call vote, deputy clerk, so whenever you're ready.
Commissioner Helsner.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith is absent. Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, the motion passes eight zero one.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve resolution authorizing the 2024 software and maintenance services renewal with Central Square to provide software support and maintenance services?
So moved Nakagiri. Support Gross.
Moved by Commissioner Nakagiri, supported by Commissioner Gross. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Resolution is approved, eight to zero. Is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the purchase of physical security equipment, systems, and maintenance from Identify Inc.?
So moved Helsner. Support Deaton.
Moved by Commissioner Helsner, supported by Commissioner Deaton. Any discussion? We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Helsner.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith is absent. Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, the motion passes eight zero one.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve resolution authorizing the purchase of cybersecurity equipment, software, maintenance, and support from Amerenat Inc.?
Move it, Helsner.
Second sample.
Moved by Commissioner Helsner, supported by Commissioner Sample. Any discussion? We will have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Helsner.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith is absent. Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, motion passes eight zero one.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve resolution approving an appointment to the area agency on AGN 1B, AAA 1B Board of Directors?
So moved Drake.
Support Nakagiri.
Moved by Commissioner Drake, supported by Commissioner Nakagiri. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Resolution is approved, eight to zero. Is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the continuation of ARPA pre-pandemic level staffing, PPLEV, for the first quarter of 2024? And several county government service projects be charged against the $10 million revenue loss allocation of the county's American Rescue Plan Act funding?
Move the resolution, Mr. Chair.
Support Deaton.
Moved by Commissioner Domas, supported by Commissioner Deaton. Any discussion? We'll have a roll call vote. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith is absent. Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helsner.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, vote passes zero eight zero one.
Eight zero one, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing additional 2024 vehicle lease for EMS?
So moved Deaton. Helsner. Support Deaton.
Moved by Commissioner Helsner, supported by Commissioner Deaton. Any discussion or questions at this time? Commissioner Nakagiri, invite Director Kellogg and Director Felpaschow.
Yeah, I was desirous of a verbal presentation.
Sure. Excuse me. Good evening, Commissioners. So EMS has, has a comparatively older fleet compared to the other departments. And when Director Felpasch came on, he's starting to replace these older vehicles, you know, regularly each year. This 2011 Yukon XL was in decent shape at budget time, which was last July, when I finalized the carpool budget. And at that point, it looked like it was going to make it another year. So in the interest of replacing some of the Echo units, some of the responding units, Director Felpasch was hoping that this would last for another year. Alas, last month, the engine blew. I can, I can get into that if you'd like, the reasons for that and what was found. But beyond needing a new engine, the cheapest quote for which was, is about $8,500. It also needs brakes all around, which carpool can do for close to $1,000 bucks. So at a minimum, we're looking at $9,500 or so to get this thing back on the road. And that is roughly the same amount in annual lease payments that the vehicle we're looking at replacing it with would cost. However, if, to be frank with you, if this only needed 5,000 worth of work, I would still be coming to recommending replacement because it's a 2011, 130,000 miles. It is, it's ready to be put out to pasture. It has, I think, also the four-wheel drive services or four-wheel drive system isn't operable, so it's only two-wheel drive truck at this point. And, you know, say we, say we got the new engine, new brakes all around. There's no telling what else could fail at this point between now and 2025. So I did want to provide you with some options. If you, if the board does wish to get this repaired and wait until budget year 2025. However, I, again, my recommendation is to replace it now. A little bit on the replacement vehicle, Director Felpasch is wanting a midsize SUV. This is, by the way, an administrative unit, I believe. Deputy Director drives this particular vehicle. And so we're looking at a Chevy Traverse. And the one that Enterprise found is, it's another part of why I'm recommending that we replace this now is that Enterprise found an early 2024 model, which is a carryover of 2023 styling. It's, you know, they call it classic, the classic model. Mid-year through this year, they're going to be, there's going to be a mid-year update, refreshed styling, so on and so forth. And you know what that means is that cost is going to go up. So I think, you know, given, given the condition of the 2011 Yukon XL and the relatively good price we got on the replacement that we identified, that's in a nutshell why I'm encouraging replacement at this point. So Director Felpasch, you have anything to add?
The only other thing is that 2011 has a residual value, if it's in good shape, of about $5,000. So in my mind, for us to throw $9,000 at a $5,000 vehicle is just throwing good money after bad.
Yeah. And I do have to commend the director. He's been very
Cheap is the word.
Well. Gonna say conservative, fiscally responsible, but this one just isn't gonna make it another year unless we plow a whole bunch of money into it, so.
Well, are there any other questions? Or I know Commissioner Nakagiri has another one, but I'll make sure all the Commissioners have an opportunity. Commissioner Gross?
Greg, do we have any other vehicles throughout our system that might be available to help Dave?
Not, not that would be in much better shape. You know, we're getting ready, we're preparing to receive the regular 2024 orders that I ordered last fall. And, and so all the vehicles that are going to be going on auction are not, not that great a shape. It would, you know, probably have to be a sheriff's vehicle. And when we receive their used vehicles, they're used up. So to answer your question, Commissioner Gross, I don't think so.
In the short term, we're holding on to one of the vehicles that we did replace. That's a former response vehicle. So we have a vehicle in its place that was scheduled to go to auction and just hasn't yet. But it's not in a lot better shape because of what he tried to politely say before.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
You have a couple of things. One, Greg, do you handle the, you know, the, all EMS stuff, including like the purchase of these chassis for the?
No, Commissioner. We handle the administrative vehicles primarily, also the, what you call Echo units. I'm not sure if everyone knows what those are, but they're, I think they're supervisors that respond to the scene. So we handle those. I believe there's seven or eight of them total right now. You've downsized the administrative fleet a little bit, so I could be off. But all the ambulances, EMS handles in-house, it's just, it's too specialized for carpool and all the, all the reach chassis. And we would, we would need probably some more staff and education to know what we're doing there, so.
Commissioner Drake.
Do Yukon go to auction?
Yes, sir.
Do we get any money out of that?
Yes, it'll, it'll, this is a county-owned vehicle that, the 2011 Yukon is a county-owned vehicle, not a lease. So the proceeds will go into the EMS's holdings, the carpool holdings, which is the residual that's built up from the prior lease program under the in-house lease program. So they have a couple hundred thousand in lease payments from that old program plus sale proceeds from county-owned vehicles that we've sold. So it would, it'll go back to EMS, is the long story short.
And we've got an upgraded, as-is disclaimer?
Yes, sir, we do. And I appreciate your help with that, Commissioner, Mr. Chair. And we were able to get some more robust auction language out of, out of our, out of our correspondence, so.
I'm set.
Any additional questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Resolution is approved, eight to zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing an insulin pricing litigation services agreement? Is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing an insulin pricing litigation services agreement?
So moved Deaton.
Second sample.
Moved by Commissioner Deaton, seconded by Commissioner Sample. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Resolution is approved, eight to zero. Is there a motion to approve the claims dated February 26th, 2024, and payables dated February 3rd through February 16th, 2024?
So moved Housman.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Housman, supported by Commissioner Domus. Any discussion? Commissioner Gross.
Chair, I'd just like to point out that in reviewing the claims of payables, I noted an error with respect to timing and of talking to the financial staff. Error has been corrected, so the payables are good to go now.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross.
Thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Approved, eight to zero. At this time, we have the evening's second call to the public. If you wish to address the board, you would have two minutes. If you do wish to address the board, please, you could step forward and relay your municipality and name.
Christopher Toby, Chief Information Officer, Livingston County. Like just to express my gratitude to the board for the approval of the three resolutions that we put before the board tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? Commissioner Housman.
I see in the audience a gentleman that's doing petitions for overriding the state's taking away the local control. Do you have petitions tonight to sign or? Okay, could you stand so? If that's okay. So if you have not signed that petition yet and you'd like to, see this gentleman afterward. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone on the call of the public that wishes to address the board at this time? I'm sorry, do we have anyone on Zoom who wishes to participate in the call of the public at this time?
I was about to interrupt, but I do not see anybody, Commissioner.
Thank you. At this time, the call of the public is closed. Is there a motion to move into closed session to discuss pending litigation? Good v. David Reader, Griswold v. Sheriff's Office, and deputies Murphy v. Melton, and Ross v. Sheriff Larry Murphy.
So moved Drake.
Support Deaton.
Moved by Commissioner Drake, supported by Commissioner Deaton. Any discussion? We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith is absent. Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Housman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domus.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, the motion passes eight, zero, one.
Thank you. At this time, we are in closed session.
Commissioner, I'll let you know once I have everybody in the waiting room. Thank you.
Thank you. We are currently in open session. Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Commissioner Gross. Second by Commissioner Sample. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned.